All right, I call this City Council Special Meeting and City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Spruce Street, the second floor, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505 on Tuesday, May 27, 2025 at 7:00 PM to order. It is actually currently 7:11 PM. And if the city clerk would be so kind as to take role.
Yes. Bill Kueke?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Here.
Daniel Trumble?
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Bugan?
Present. First item we have in this special meeting is to conduct a public hearing regarding a proposal to remove certain parcels from the development district designated the City of Morgantown Redevelopment District Number Three, the TIF District, thereby amending the boundaries of the TIF District, a proposal to extend the TIF District termination date by 15 years beyond its termination date, and a proposal to permit the issuance of additional tax increment revenue, bonds, or other obligations to fund additional phases of development within the current project plan designated as Sunnyside Up Project Plan Number One, as previously amended and supplemented the project plan. While as further described in the tax increment financing application dated April 7, 2025, the amendment application. City Attorney? We info to this real quick?
This is just the public hearing item.
Oh.
Ah.
Okay. Sorry. So this is a public hearing.
Yeah, so we open the public hearing.
Open a public hearing and close a public hearing.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing in regards to what I just read.
You don't wanna read it again?
Anyone wishing to speak? Closing public hearing? Huh? All right. And then the next one is the public hearing again.
The next item is the resolution to submit the application to the West Virginia Department of Economic Development to amend the city's TIF District Number Three.
Okay, so that's what, so now we're voting on the resolution?
That's correct.
To consideration of approval of a resolution for the amendment application submission of the amendment application to the West Virginia Department of Economic Development or successor in approval of other items in connection with.
Thank you, Mayor. And this, as has previously been discussed before council, is a resolution that will authorize the city's application to amend its TIF District Number Three, the Sunnyside District. The amendment will involve removing four parcels of land and proposing the extension of the district by a term of 15 years, as well as an increase in the bonding capacity, all to facilitate development plans by the district developer, the campus neighborhoods, revitalization corporation. We have here tonight Carrie Cecil with Frost Brown Todd, who's assisting the city with the application, as well as Russ Rogerson, who is the president and CEO of Partnership, and in that capacity is a member of CNRC, if council would have any additional information needed from them. Otherwise, ask the council approve the resolution and we will get the application submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. This is our second time having this version of a meeting, so I feel like we've gotten a lot of information on this. Now that I appreciate the attendance of everybody, does anyone have questions, or would it be beneficial to have them come and give a quick background, or?
I think for...
A little tiny.
Tiny.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're here.
The explanation for whatever viewing public we have would be appropriate.
Sure. Is anyone who'd ever would like to give the best explanation, synopsis, overview?
Sure, happy to. Good evening, I'm Carrie Cecil with Frost Brown Todd. As Ryan described, the resolution that you have before you is very straightforward. It authorizes the submission of the proposed application to the State Department of Economic Development, or, to be honest, I'm not sure if it's Development Office yet, but we picked up its successor in the resolution. And it would simply propose removing the four parcels from the district, and that'll decrease the base assessed value for the district, extend the term by 15 years, and it allows, you know, the potential for future bond issuances based on if there's future development in the district. So happy to answer any questions.
Out of curiosity, does this include the work, too?
It does not. This is just with respect to the Sunnyside Up District.
Okay.
So it allow pay-as-you-go or bonding, whatever seemed appropriate?
Yeah, there's two series.
The amount of development and...
Yeah, there's two series of outstanding bonds. Those are currently being paid as scheduled, and there are additional funds available to pay down those bonds faster, or fund pay-as-you-go projects as we go along. You know, if it makes sense from a financial perspective in the future, those could be eligible to be refunded, or for additional bonds to be issued to fund additional projects for infrastructure.
It all sounds great.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. We look forward to a productive Sunnyside District. Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bugan?
Yes, passes six zero. And then that is all that I have on our special meeting agenda, so I would entertain...
Move to adjourn this special meeting?
Second. Okay.
Do you second?
Bill.
Bill, thank you. Okay.
I need one second, because we also have to switch seats and everything else.
Okay.
Um, I noticed you're still recording. Do you wanna pause the live?
Just leave it.
Stream?
Let me just keep going.
Keep going?
Go.
Hi. You're good.
Bill!
I don't know.
Have you missed sitting next to me?
Of course. Thank you. I was gonna ask, and I didn't. All right. All right, we are in a moment.
Is this, who's in this one?
Are we going to do another session?
Yeah, we're gonna start the regular meeting, regular committee.
This is a regular committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
Is this yours?
Um, I think we wrapped some stuff, so there...
I need, what? It's the art and culture development pack.
There will not be a roll call for committed a hole.
All right, I think this is...
We'll just both flip it.
I'll figure it out.
Yeah. All right. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is a committee of the whole meeting. We're in City Hall Council Chambers. It's Tuesday, May 27. This meeting is broadcast via YouTube, and the committee of the whole meetings of the Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, identify policy options. In an informal setting, no official action is taken at these meetings. At this committee of the whole meeting, the following matters are scheduled. The first item has been postponed to another meeting. The second item is Grace Shelter, and we'd love to see a presentation from Jessica Thompson, the director.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jessica Thompson, Director at Grace Shelter. Some of you I've met at our open house and other events that we've had, and some are new faces to me. And I apologize, I was going to send PowerPoint and stuff today, and my laptop decided to not recuperate after Memorial.
We're happy to hear a presentation, no problem.
So, what I have so far is a lot of statistics, because I know that a lot of the community likes to hear how we're doing so far in operation under Catholic Charities after taking over from the Bartlett House. So, we took operation as of September 1, and we really didn't open our doors until October 17 to new intakes. At that time, we had five individuals that were carryovers from the Bartlett Housing Solutions at the time. So, as of October 1, we have served 124 different individuals within just Grace Shelter. That does not include the winter warming shelter. With that, 12 of those individuals were veterans. 24 were considered chronically homeless, which means 12 or more months of homelessness. And eight of those were considered youth, so it's under the age of 25. We've seen a huge increase in the age of individuals that come into the shelter. The majority are over... The majority are over the age of fifty. I always like to point that out.
Interesting.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
You said you've seen a huge increase, so what was it prior?
I guess the wording is "we have seen" over fifty. I can't tell you with Bartlett, because the statistics and the data was not there.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I think general conception is that a typical homeless individual or those experiencing homeless are younger to middle age.
Okay.
And we're really not seeing a whole lot of that. Within that one hundred and twenty-four, we have assisted twenty-six individuals with obtaining their entire set of identification documents, birth certificate, ID, and social security card. With that, we have had to jump through hoops with the DMV. It's not as easy to obtain a residence as it used to be. Meaning, DMV has made it a requirement that an individual has to reside in a recovery home or a homeless shelter. So, Health Right can no longer obtain IDs for individuals, because they are not a live-in center. So, and on top of that, either myself or my service coordinator has to be present with the individual to sign an acknowledgement that they are a resident, plus I have to give a residency letter from myself. So, it's, I just wanna enforce that before we go down that route, we make sure that they are stable and definitely need that, and they're not just gonna be a pass-through for us. So, because it's a lot of work on everybody's part. Thirty-five individuals had their full set of documents whenever they came to us. So, they were ahead, a step ahead of the game, per se. And then, we also have successfully housed thirty-five individuals in permanent housing out of that one hundred and twenty-four. That does not include jails, hospitals, recovery centers, or other shelters. This is actual housing. So, I'm sure you're interested in to know who we are serving, where they're from, right? Fifty percent are from Mon County. And the way we determine this is their last known address to us. If they cannot provide a last known address, which was, I've been only one case of that, then we dig a little further to see where they come from. Thirteen percent are out-of-state. Out-of-state includes Pennsylvania, Ohio, Virginia, Texas. I wanna get all of them. And Maryland. The next highest counties in West Virginia that we serve is Harrison County and Marion County. Kanawha County is the next largest. And then after that is Randolph County. We run the shelter or operate the shelter a little bit differently than what it was before. We don't kick people out at eight o'clock in the morning, but they do have to be back in at nine PM for a bed count. It's not a curfew, it's a bed count. We have very open communication with individuals. They can even ask for a night out pass. They just can't abuse that. So, if you come in and you're asking for night passes every couple days, you're gonna lose your bed, because obviously you have someplace else to reside. So, with that, we have seen a lot of participation in the services that we offer and the resources that we give individuals, such as Health Right or Valley or Chestnut or whoever it may be, because the individuals are able to stay in and work with our staff. Disciplinary actions are very, very few. We do de-escalation tactics. Our verbal warnings up like crazy. I, we do a two-hour cool-off period. So, if there's like a verbal argument, or they're disrespecting staff, or whatever it may be, and they're just not obeying the rules, we're like, okay, you have time outs. You have to go outside for two hours. And it doesn't matter whether it's raining or snowing or whatever. We don't deviate from that. They're out for two hours. Usually, the tempers have calmed down. Everybody has a bad day. I have a bad day. And I'll tell my staff and the clients, "Don't come near me. You don't wanna do that." Because I don't wanna react bad. So, that usually is our biggest disciplinary action. I have had a couple people out for twenty-four hours. They don't lose their bed, we hold it. With previous administration, that bed would've been gone in that twenty-four hours. We don't do that. I have had to trespass people, and right now, I have one that I have a protective order against personally, because he chased me into the building. And he's still been coming up on the property, right beside the property, the funds. So, other than that, it's actually gone over very well. We have gotten great feedback from the clients that we have served. Safety, no concerns on that, and it's clean. That was two of the biggest complaints that I guess I heard about how it was operated before, and those were the two main issues that I was gonna tackle. With that, we have brought brightness into the shelter. It's not institutional-looking. We're working with individuals that are depressed already. Why make them more depressed? By being in a sterile environment. So, if you come up, and I invite everybody to come up and tour, you'll see pops of color everywhere. We got a donation of new mattresses, because I don't know why anyone would wanna lay on what they were sleeping on.
Had a cop.
The mattresses were just disgusting, disgusting. Yeah. So, we also have specialized, special-built storage for, under the beds. They can lock, they can put like a, any type of lock on them. It has a lid. They slide perfectly under the beds and come back out. That's where their stuff needs to be. It's no longer in a footlocker at the end of the bed where it's open to people. They weren't secure, we're not doing that anymore. We value their items just as much as they value their items. So, but I, like I said, I think it's going well. I'm open to all questions. And any improvement suggestions, I am, I'm always open, so.
What percent capacity do you typically run at the shelter?
We're at one hundred percent almost every day. Yeah, I usually fill a bed within just a few hours.
Have you had to turn people away?
All the time.
What would you say is the average amount of turn away?
So, we started really notating that recently. And I would say, hmm, probably twenty a month.
Are these coming to you as referrals?
Some, some are like WVU will call us. I finally, finally got a connection with Mon General, so they'll stop dropping people off, which was a huge impact with us. They did it last night, actually. Just had EMS drop a guy off. We didn't have a bed. But some are, just show up at the door or call. We are seeing more out-of-state people calling in, like Florida, and just different places, so.
When you say someone calling, is it the person looking for a bed? Or is it, or is it someone looking for a bed for a person in there?
Both, both. Also get calls, a lot of calls from the correctional institutions for the parolees, because they have to have a place to go in order to be paroled. And I'm willing to work for them. My background's criminal justice. I understand the system, totally open, if I have a bed available and I'm not holding it. I don't have enough beds. With not, going from twenty-eight beds to nineteen beds, it hurt. It did. So, a goal is where we operated the warming shelter last year on the first floor in the Hoop Hill. The fire marshal gave us permission. If we could get the money to take over that space, he would give us fifteen more permanent beds. Now, what I have talked about to my CEO is to operate that as a night-only shelter. So, the individuals just needing a place to sleep, not really wanting services or anything like that, come in, sleep, showers would be open, laundry would be open. They would have those resources during that time, but then by morning, they would have to go. But, we would open our day room upstairs to them. So, it's, they just wouldn't have access to the sleeping quarters. And the reason being is that's more staff. That is needed, more security, more cameras, that type of thing. So, it's a starting point. If we could get those fifteen beds, that would be very beneficial. And then, we can really evaluate somebody as they come in and work them through our program. With that, for an emergency triage, the definition is forty-five days, max, that somebody is supposed to receive your services. So, how we are going about this is after the first forty-five days, we evaluate every individual in there and determine what they wanna do. We don't force them to do anything. They can leave at any time. We don't hold them hostage by any means. Some are ready for the change, some need more support elsewhere. Mental health is a big one. Recovery, we've gotten people into recovery within that forty-five days. They can always come back to us, if we have been. So, after forty-five days, I meet with my service specialists. We look at how they're doing with us. Are they a candidate for permanent housing? And we will allow them to stay longer. We have put a max of one hundred and eighty days. And I've had to let three people go because of that. And these three people pretty much wouldn't even get out of the bed for us. Not your typical person that we work with. They need other services, and they just refuse to do anything, so. We help other, we help individuals go home if they're not from here. I'll buy you a bus ticket. Or, I have fixed cars for individuals that have cars that need that to go to work. I partner with Gearhead Garage over at M-Tech, they've been great. All I have to do is buy the parts, they fix them for me. Good partnership. So, but that's what we do. And unfortunately, I've had to instill those guidelines just because we went from twenty-eight beds down to nineteen, and I just can't serve as many as I did. Yes, ma'am?
So, the space that you have now, the twenty-eight beds down to nineteen, is there anything like adding more doors or other things that can be done that would help you to go back up a few? No?
No. It's based upon living square foot. So, initially, when it was configured, they configured the office spaces in with that, and then they turned them into office spaces. And so, that decreased the number.
Gotcha. And then, the space downstairs that could be fifteen more beds, is that the space that you held this year's winter shelter in?
Yes.
Okay. And, and that would be fifteen more?
That would be fifteen more.
And, and I understand the staffing, not being able to staff during the day. What would it take to effectuate that?
We are operating with a budget of five hundred thousand for Grace alone. And I'm gonna pat myself on the shoulder, because I was the only program out of Catholic Charities, West Virginia, that came under budget. I tried to do that. I'm very, very fickle when it comes to money. To increase the downstairs, it's mainly utilities and leasing of the space. I'm estimating another hundred and fifty per year if we do the, just the overnight shelter aspect.
Utilities and lease, not personnel? You have the personnel to-
I would have maybe hire one more, but my staff, I only have, my service specialist is full-time, and I have one other full-time staff. Everybody else is part-time. So, taking them up to full-time would benefit them and benefit the program. And they would be able to cover that.
And you were able to-
We did that during the warming-
With the warming shelter, with your staff?
Warming shelter also. Actually, I think at that point in time, my staff made more than I did, because of all the hours.
Okay?
And that includes the linen, the sanitation, the cleaning, because I have all that contracted out. Willing Linen does our linens. Mount Air Maids does our cleaning service three times a week. And Centos provides all of our supplies.
Okay? Who else has questions?
By me. Just, first of all, let me tell you, thank you. I appreciate what you've done and the way you approach things. I think, you know, it's good to hear the good you've managed to accomplish and the services that you provide to a very needy group of people. I know we talked about additional beds at the facility, you know, upstairs that may have been, come in the future. As I listen to this, and as I hear, you know, the requests for services and where they come from, how do we keep this manageable? In other words, we could expand forever, and there would certainly be a line of people willing to participate. The question is, how can we serve our community and keep it in some sort of manageable state, not only for the community itself, and not only for our budget in our city, but also for what your services are capable of providing?
Well, I think we do a very good job now at defining what our services are. So, before we even intake somebody- one, they have to be able to climb stairs and go up and downstairs. And the reason, we're on the second floor. Fire, elevator shuts down, we can't get people out. We witnessed that over the warming shelter. We had three people in wheelchairs and the fire marshal didn't like that either. Because we put them in the, we put them in the stairwell the way we're supposed to. However, with the apartments and stuff upstairs, those people could not get down. That was the only form of egress. So with the expansion to the other floor, we could put the medically challenged downstairs where we would, we would just resolve that issue altogether. Also, we do not provide medical services. We do not provide substance abuse services. We don't provide mental health services. So when, upon intake, when we see somebody in need of that, we reach out to our partners and say, hey, I got somebody for you that is suited better for you. So we sort of have narrowed down our, our scope of the individuals that we serve. On the other hand, we take more, a more variety than most shelters. We take sex offenders. That's why I can't have anyone under the age of eighteen in my shelter. We're only one of three in the whole state that takes sex offenders. I will take somebody on oxygen. Very few will accept somebody on oxygen. And like I said, our clientele is becoming older. And you see the need for that. So honestly, I think it is a, more of a assessing them at intake and determining what their needs are and making it more specific towards them. Actually getting them the help that they need versus opening the door and letting them just stay there all day.
That leads to follow-on, I think. What kind of cooperation are you getting from your, as you indicated, partners?
Excellent. I work very well with WBU Valley. With the, we've seen a very good outpour with the Healthy Minds Mobile Unit. It comes up two days a week. That's awesome. They actually text me and say, we've seen four of your clients today. And that we have release of information so that they can provide me what is needed for their services. So they even helped do an assessment with them. She texted me today and said, hey, I have a couple that's homeless. Do you have any space? I said, no. Check Fairmont, that might be the close, the next closest place. And they went to Fairmont. So cooperation, I, I think I've done great establishing those connections. A lot of times, people will just, will text and be like, hey, this is going on. And usually I have somebody just step up to the plate and say, hey, we can help out like this or check this resource. And it's actually going very well.
And what, what would be your evaluation of their capabilities? In other words, are they capable of handling what you're throwing at them or what we're seeing?
Uh, yes. I think the only, it, it's not that the providers aren't capable. It is that the clients refuse to cooperate is probably what I've seen the most of. I mean, I even had today an APS worker there and this client just absolutely downright refused the services. And they've probably gotten five or six calls about this one client. So I can only do so much.
Do you feel like you have like meaningful routes to exit people right now? Is that a big challenge for you?
We have many meaningful routes. It takes forever to get somebody there. And that's very hard to relay to the clients because they believe it's going to happen quickly. So, I mean, even my transitional units that we put upstairs. We had, we just took over Grace Housing. You'll see more and more of that pop up. But right now, we have five transitional apartments or full apartments. On our third floor of Hazel's House of Hope, I run them as six months transitional. I have a waiting list. So we're definitely needing more resources.
Like PSH programs and stuff like that?
So yeah, with the permanent supportive housing, they have wraparound services for individuals on site. And there's not enough of them. Because a lot of those experiencing mental health would benefit greatly from a PSH placement. Because they can function, they're fine, as long as somebody's there to make sure that they take their bills and just, and monitor. So there's just not enough of that here in this area.
Any other questions?
I just invite you to come up.
Weezy, do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you.
I can.
I just have one question. So I, I think though I've had to collaborate with all those donors, do you guys reach out to Pittsburgh and New York and, and you bigger cities?
We do. Yes, we do. We've been reaching out to Union Town, Pittsburgh, Arlington, Richmond. Yeah. So, and we are, I'm actually going next month to tour Catholic Charities Alexandria facilities to try to bring what they do, the resources into here. And that includes, yeah, that just includes their shelter and transitional and permanent supportive housing units.
Now, just out of curiosity, what's the number of beds in, let's say, I'm assuming a city like Pittsburgh? Do you have, do you have a Catholic Charities in Richmond?
Uh, not in Richmond. I believe that the one that I've been dealing with has been in Alexandria, Virginia.
What's the capacity?
So I can't remember what their shelter is, but I'm thinking it's around seventy.
Okay.
And then their transitional housing programs and permanent supportive housing units are smaller. I think they're around thirty.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
So the second floor, I, I think if I remember correctly, maybe a while back, you talked about the second floor making more, or I'm sorry, maybe it was the, is there a third floor already?
Uh huh.
Were you guys thinking about doing more shelter beds out there?
So actually, I think what you're referring to is the demoed second floor on the right-hand side. So if you're looking at it, so we are putting in a West Virginia Housing Development Fund grant. And MCR is writing a grant through the Federal Home Loan Bank to rehab those into twenty-six transitional apartments.
Oh wow, that's great.
Yeah.
Well, I just, Jess, I just want to say thank you for all you do. I apologize I'm not there in person, but it's greatly appreciated what you do.
Thank you.
What happens to families then?
Sorry.
No, you're. I didn't mean to ask that question because I, I can tell if you're not taking couples and you're not taking people under eighteen, that families would be a little difficult. So.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take couples. They just can't reside in the same dorm.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. But we just can't, we can't take anybody under the age of eighteen. It's, it probably is the hardest thing for me to face. Is I get calls from the school's social workers that they have a family sleeping in their car. And I can't help them. Scott's Place in Fairmont has one family room. In the warming shelter, we were taking kids under the age of eighteen. But we had the space that we could, they were confined to their own area. So there's a lot more storage rooms and office spaces that the fire marshal allowed us to have beds in. Because they still had egress and heating and cooling. So we would put the families in those. So they were away from the, from the rest.
Once you are using that space again, then would families be able to attend when you're, are you fifteen? Because it was a temporary?
Because all the grants have been written for only adults. I've addressed this with the CEO.
You have what?
I have addressed this with the CEO.
Yeah.
But that's how the prior funding was. So when we took it over, we just incorporated the same.
Yeah. So maybe over time?
Mm-hmm. Oh, my, oh, yes, absolutely. Is to be able to house. And even on the second floor, if we were able to, to gain the first floor space on that second floor because of the way the dorm, the dorms are set up, I have two that are individualized dorms. They stand alone. I can easily put families in one. But then I also have to gauge if I have a sex offender in there. I don't get many. And I try to, we try to move them out relatively quickly. But at one point, I had three at one time. I don't have any now. But I, I could absolutely manage family space at, at the moment. It, it, it's, it, it hurts every time I get called and I say that I can't provide for families.
Good to know.
Yep.
To, I, I guess to lay some of that concern, but certainly not all of it. The, our hotel program does, I mean, that's majority of people.
Right, that's what I'm familiar with is what.
Yeah, and I do get this school social workers, thankfully, and are amazing, by the way, the school social workers. I don't know how they do it. But also, the Coalition has a hotel voucher program and most of that goes towards.
To the families.
They get higher, much higher priority.
The same supportive services.
Right, exactly. I mean, the hotels stuff is, there's not really any supportive programming for those.
But.
It's better than.
It's, it's better than a car or on the street.
Right.
Yeah.
Isn't the voucher program maxed out at the moment?
So that, you're thinking of the rental voucher program? The, the rental voucher program is closed to new applicants currently, yes.
Okay.
But, and to your waiting list?
Yes.
I think. And then, but, but the hotel voucher program is, is a different sort of thing. Yeah, voucher, voucher, but yeah. They're just paying for people to be.
I've texted them a lot.
They're just paying for people to be in hotels.
Yes, that's wonderful.
And we don't work necessarily on a waiting list. We do keep track of who's calling in. One, for data. But two, to see who is really wanting that bed. We, we had one the other night that she came in, reserved the bed, and then asked for two night passes in a row. And I said, you don't have a bed anymore. You obviously don't need it. And we had several female, and we only have six female beds, which is another downfall. So.
Well, appreciate you doing what you can do with what you have.
Yep. I appreciate you guys and the funding. Can't do it without you guys. But anytime, you know, I have an open door policy, feel free to come up and stop in and see what, see what we do. And I'll be happy to speak at any other time too. Let me know.
Please keep the lines of communication open. It's good to hear this publicly and share this. And I think this is an appropriate venue. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is Ruby Summer Concert Series 2025, Vincent Kitch, Director of Arts and Cultural Development.
Good evening. I actually have a PowerPoint. And I left you a copy on your desk. Thanks for having me. It's been a while, I think, since I've been here at council. So I want to give you an update actually on the whole department and what we've been working on and what we're doing. And we'll certainly get to the summer. It's hard to believe that it was April 2020 when COVID started that I came here. The only person working out of this building when, because there were no more laptops. And where we are now, because I think it's a, it's a, we've really grown. And thanks for your support and city management and some really aggressive fundraising efforts. I think we're having a major impact on the community. And so we're going to pull that out. Slide change. Oh, there we go. So you can go. So I want to talk a little bit about the museum. July 21, the Morgantown History Museum became the newest part of our department. With the hiring of our museum manager, Jason Burns, I think the museum has undergone tremendous growth over the last year, year and a half. I can tell you this calendar year, we've had over thirteen hundred visitors, which is something around double what it was three years ago for an entire year. So I think the museum's doing great things. The staff have created thirteen special exhibitions. They've partnered with over twenty organizations. The museum is open on weekends. We participate in First Fridays. The city ambassadors volunteer two hours every month. And they either bring city employees or community members with them to come volunteer at the museum to help the museum do what it does, which I think is great. Right now, the museum has an exhibit on the Old Stone House until the end of May. And in June, we're going to have an exhibit on Senator Waitman T. Willie and the role of Mon County in the formation of the state of West Virginia. In fact, there's a fundraising event. I left you a little flyer about the museum and about the fundraising event. On West Virginia Day, June 20th, you can take a history tour of the Willie home and the grounds. And that's being done by the Friends of Morgantown History Museum. As you know, last summer, it was actually August, when the Montagnalia County Historical Society approached the museum about taking on the Eastern Roller Mill, which we're working on. Mill was constructed between 1864 to 1867. It's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's out there at the junction of Route 119 and Route 857, right adjacent to the airport property. The Historical Society is shuttering completely and you recently approved taking over operations of that. So we're working on that now. We're going to be doing that title work. And we're going to begin immediately with some immediate repair issues. That front deck will have to be replaced and redone. And so we're already working with engineers and construction people to kind of tee up that. We're getting funding from the society and we also have some grants already that we can access for that. But that'll be the first thing that we do as soon as we have keys to the mill. Next, we'll talk a little bit about the Met, you know, the most iconic historic cultural institution in Morgantown. It serves over thirty thousand visitors annually. Hundred performance days, performances, events at the Met a year. We had the one hundredth anniversary last year along with Don Knotts in July. I think, you know, the way we approach it, to keep the Met going strong for another hundred years, we've been doing a lot of work in the last five years. Thanks to grants, fundraising and support from city council and the managers, we've invested nearly a million dollars in capital projects, including a new roof, carpet, seats, curtains, the entire HVAC system. This spring, we finished replacing the entire lighting controls and lighting instrument systems. And we're currently working on repairs and upgrades to our fly system, which is all of those literally hemp ropes and sandbags that are back there now, fewer on motors. We're trying to take care of that and keep the Met going into the future. This is really all accomplished by careful multi-year planning and budgeting along with a healthy number of grants from state agencies. I hope that continues. We'll see. Local foundations. And I really want to just mention again, we also received a gift recently from the estate of Nancy Love of seventy-five thousand dollars in honor of her mother who loved the Met. And we didn't know it was coming. It just came. And we're very thankful because we already need it for those aforementioned repairs. I think the community loves the Met. We've been voted the best performing arts or cultural venue in Morgantown five of the last six years.
Real quick?
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Ruby Amphitheater at Hazel Ruby and McQuain Park is probably one of the newest venues in the region. I believe it's the crown jewel of Morgantown. That's pun intended for you that are following along. The community really loves the amphitheater and what we do. We've number, we've won a number of best Morgantown awards, best amount in your country, gold medals, placed in Best of West Virginia, et cetera. Most recently, we placed third in the USA Today Ten Best Readers' Choice Poll for the Best Outdoor Concert Series in the U.S., thanks to our great, you know, audience members and supporters for voting for us that. We have been averaging over forty thousand people a year at the park for all the different events, including the concerts. And we know, at least in one year, they came from over twenty different states. And I know because they call me and say, I'm driving from North Carolina to come see Home Free. Where can I stay? What can I do? And so, and we track them on our, on our social media. So it's really become a large-scale operation. So what you actually asked me to talk about tonight. You know, we lost the, we launched the first Ruby Summer Concert Series in 2022. It's continued to grow. It's very popular. The series features free concerts of nationally touring artists. Really also feature local, regional, many West Virginia artists as opening acts every Friday, June, July, August. It's very intentionally diverse. We always say there's something for everyone. We keep hitting the mayor's playlist, which is great because every time we announce it, he's like, I love this group. I love this group. That's our lineup for this year. You can see our Best of Morgantown award again this year. Now, this project is really, was and is made possible by generous grants from the Hazel Ruby and McQuain Territable Trust are ongoing. A bunch of local community sponsors, you know, because I tell people all the time, I was just explaining this to someone on Facebook, that with the exception of city salaries, really, the amphitheater programs and events are funded entirely by grants and sponsorships, which bring in over a half million dollars a year of outside money. Nearly every single department does play a role in supporting the park and our work in the summer. And we couldn't do it without them because I always tell people, it really does take the entire organization to make it happen. And I can tell you, they've been down there a lot in the last few weeks, just getting ready for the summer. On the next slide, you can kind of see our current list of sponsors for this year. I did put a note for those who might be watching. There still could be time to get your business out there on the website. It's getting really tight. But if anybody wants to become part of supporting the Ruby Concert Series, we can certainly have that conversation. But again, it really comes from the trust to state agencies, our, our marketing partnership, the CDB, just great, great businesses of all sizes, right down to individual people who have businesses. And it's truly a whole community effort. So other events that we have at the park, we have actually over forty event dates at the park scheduled right now, which include walks, runs, weddings, community festivals, of course, this concert series. We know the Ruby is contributing to tourism, not to mention all the great entertainment we provide to communities. Our headliners stay in hotels, they eat local food, people traveled, as I mentioned. Our little food vendors sell over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year, which is basically four hours a night over twelve or thirteen events, when you break it down. Those are all local businesses that are buying all their supplies here and doing all that. This year, obviously, one of the most popular events that we do is the Fourth of July celebration. Again, we're going to be having free face painting and an inflatable fun zone for the kids. Our local food and beverage vendors will be down there for the Fourth of July. We have big city fireworks, I tell everyone. And this year's entertainment will feature the U.S. Army Jazz Ambassadors, as well as a commercial band that features the vocalist of the U.S. Army Field Band out of Virginia. So they're going to perform from seven to about nine forty-five. And then we're going to scare every domestic and non-domestic animal in the county for about twenty minutes with big explosions that make the trees look like they're catching on fire. I remember that first year. But, you know, it, it's just been a truly, it's a true blessing for me to get to work on this project. And I have people who approach me in the grocery store or come to the park and talk about going to the concerts. I becomes, I tell people I'm pseudo-famous in the summer, and then I, people forget about me in the winter. But it's really great to have just common people offer to help pick up trash or come up to you and say, thank you for doing this. And that reflects on everyone and the whole city. And so we want everyone to like, follow us on all your social medias and share those posts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
The momentum that you've gathered is impressive. And I think right now, it's in a very good place that can continue for a period of time. I really do appreciate that. And that's due to organization and plus some good luck and some money behind it. The question I had is with the roller mill, that you're going to be doing some repair out there. You running into any kind of restrictions in terms of what we can do historically? In other words?
I don't think so. The deck is obviously not from the eighteen hundreds because it was redone. And it's literally, you get four people up in there and you start walking around, it's, it's, it's squishy. We call it squishy. The building itself is very sound. So we ought to be able to replace the entire front entrance deck. We're probably going to put some, there's no concrete out in front. I really want to improve the handicapped accessibility with the ramp. And then the other part of the building that needs to be worked on really is painting, barn red. And then there is some soffit work, probably most of the soffits will have to be replaced. But that's really it for a hundred and fifty, whatever, two-hundred-year-old building. Because the building itself is sound, and it is kind of like a barn anyway. But historically, you know, there shouldn't be any issues. We don't have any shipboat money in it, and there's no ship. We missed the shipboat deadline by about, I don't know, two weeks.
You anticipated.
Before we got into this. And we don't know if there'll be shipboat money in the future. So we'll look into that, but I think it will be okay.
We're not doing anything that's going to inhibit any kind of future restoration. Let me phrase that correctly. Restoration that, similar to what we experienced when we redid this.
Right. Yeah, we should. Like I said, the, the deck itself is clearly not historical, and that's the first main concern. And after that, we're literally restoring the soffits, which should be, and, and painting. So that, we haven't really seen anything else. Our engineering report was really solid. They're like, you know, you got to watch these beams, but they're still standing there since eighteen sixty-five or whatever it was when it was built. It's not bad. It is in a flood plain, and it did flood about five feet of muddy water at one point. And the society literally built a flood wall around the entire property to keep the water out, which we haven't had, they hadn't had issues since that time. It was one of those hundred-year flood kind of situations. But it's been well taken care of. It's just the society is, their most active member who calls us, called us this week, is ninety. And he's like, what's happening? I'm like, we're, we're going forward. Don't worry. We're going to be there for you. It'll be an interesting place. We, we've got some ideas already on how to enliven it and making it relative to the community.
If you do pancake breakfast.
They used to do that.
I'd be glad to come flip.
Okay. And we are getting a garage full of pop-ups and grills and all the stuff to do those kinds of events. I think a wedding might be cool. We just had a wedding at the park last weekend. We had a dinner and party in the depot on one night, and they got married down by the river on Sunday. And so I think weddings could be nice out there. I think barbecues or picnics, historic days where you have reenactors or blacksmiths or people doing that sort of thing. There's a lot of things we can do, plus they did a lot of publications. And so we'd like to continue that. But we are shifting gears because of the AmeriCorps program. Obviously, we were in line to get another full-time AmeriCorps just for the mill. And it was sort of already teed up with saying, yes, we'd love to do that. And so now we don't know what that's going to bring. So, but we're still working.
Events at the utilities that we have at the mill, electricity, is there water? And there's not heat, right?
No, there's no heat. There, yeah, it's basically electric and water. The, the tire operating cost that the Historic Society was doing was something around the neighborhood of five thousand dollars a year. And half of that was the guy who mows whenever it needs to be mowed. I mean, it was very, it's, they only had it open maybe one weekend a month. I can't imagine that the, the utility will be anything significant. And we are going to get, I think, between twenty-seven and twenty-nine thousand dollars from the Historic Society as part of the transfer. And like I said, we've already scored a couple of grants, and I think we've got a couple of ideas for others. We were invited to apply for a Benedum grant for the museum, which if Benedum doesn't have open grants for arts and culture in museums, you get asked and invited to apply, and we'll know in July whether we get that grant. That would be significant funding that would also support some of this work. Because they see what we've done in the Morgantown History Museum and being a city facility, we're sort of one of the larger history museums, if you would, at least budget-wise and infrastructure in the state. And so they were really nice to reach out to us. They gave us a grant last year for the Met. Similarly, they asked us to apply, and they were very generous. So we're hoping on that, too. And we'll find out in July. And that, just like we will find out from the State Arts Council, we won't know until July if they exist and if there's an allocation of grants. Because that's, state arts councils are directly tied to the National Endowment for the Arts. The state doesn't, the only reason we have a state arts council is because the NEA gives two hundred and fifty thousand to all the states. The states match it, and that creates a state arts council. So if, for some reason, the National Endowment for the Arts goes, it would probably be next year. But again, all state federal funding is really kind of just in a scary limbo right now.
Unfortunate, because you're humming.
We're doing good things, yeah. The museum's really taken off, you know? I mean, it really has. It's, it's, it's a great place to be. And we've, you know, we've sort of outgrown it. It's so tight in there. But we're doing new and cool things there all the time.
That was going to be my question. Is there an idea of expanding it and where you might expand to, I guess?
Well, you know, we have been working with the HBO and the, the, the work around the post office and all that. We always look for that. We are also always, I'm always looking for, what is that, you know, does, is that enough? Or is there another opportunity? We don't know. But right now, I can tell you, we've got thousands of artifacts, and we are definitely wedged in there, making every use of every corner of that space right now. So, and what can do, we can shift some of that to the mill and maybe, you know, use that. But it could, it could definitely grow.
I love the museum. I've been there multiple times. Jason does such a great job.
He has.
He's so knowledgeable and everything else.
He was, it took a year and a half to get that hire done. I literally interviewed people for a year and a half, and then he's, he's been great. And he loves it. He told me when I interviewed him, it was his dream job. I'm like, okay, let's go. And he's jumped right in. So it's great.
In the concert series, yes.
Still hitting your, still hitting your playlist.
Mm-hmm. I, as a millennial, I approve of this message.
Well, you know, we're, we're, we try to try, we try to cover all the bases, from the Village People to Matty and Tay or Dasha. So I think we're doing okay.
As not a millennial, nice playlist.
I still, you know, me, it's about, I love the eighties, and they're the most expensive of all. I'm still trying. I was, I did an interview the other day, and the state fair just announced that Kansas and Thirty-Eight Special are both coming. And I've already been talking to those bands for next year, which makes me mad. But we'll still probably keep talking to them because I really want to hear Kerry "On My Wayward Son" coming out of that amphitheater. Since they're back touring, they quit, now they're back. But yeah, we, it's intentional, something for everyone.
Do you need me?
Every week.
Do you need me to throw out t-shirts or anything?
Right now, I, I think we've got it covered. But, you know, we appreciate it. I don't, I try not to open the, I keep that genie in the bottle. I get that question a lot from a lot of people.
I've been stretching.
I know.
You're ready.
Maybe I'll let you shoot if we get the t-shirt going, you know, you guys.
If I, if I provide the t-shirt cannon, I may have already ordered one.
It's amazing how much they cost.
Five hundred and fifty dollars. On Amazon.
And thank you all for your support.
Better make use of all your resources.
We, we, we try to do what we can, yes. Thank you.
All right. Everybody good? We're good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation.
All right, now we're on to the Housing Advisory Commission, Ricky Jaeger, Director of Development Services. And I like it when I write it out because then I don't hesitate over.
Of how, what?
The, the, the title.
Oh.
Because there's always.
What are you?
I don't know. There's a, there's a, there's a lot of titles that go with what you do.
Right. Well, I appreciate that. And thank you all for having me this evening and hope you all had a nice Memorial Day weekend. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you regarding the potential changes to Section 160 of the city's codified ordinances regarding the Housing Advisory Committee. In consulting with Councilor Koewke, who has served on the committee since its establishment, it appears that the committee was initially in part created in 2014 as a mechanism to improve communication between the city, the university, and stakeholders that provide housing for students. While the committee was active and well-attended under the leadership of Mr. Brian Walker, for many years, interest began to wane after COVID. Since Mr. Walker retired from his role on the committee, the group has really ceased to function. And given the growing concerns around affordable housing in urban and rural places alike, staff convened several stakeholder meetings to discuss the future of the committee last year and the beginning of this year. What came from these discussions is a genuine belief that the committee can play a positive role in helping city administration and council enact policies, programs, and initiatives that address affordable housing issues in our community. This belief was bolstered by the city's Housing Needs Assessment Report conducted in 2021, where it recommended that, quote, "The city consider reaffirming the Housing Advisory Commission direction and function to implement housing goals, policies, programs for the city," end quote. Additionally, the city's comprehensive plan update recommends that the Housing Advisory Committee work with other groups in town, like the Land Reuse Agency, to tackle policies and programs that address affordable housing issues such as aging in place or creating housing stock for the missing middle. Staff have also started to look into this further by examining resources from the Link Institute of Land Policy and the Housing Assessor Litterator Playbook, which was developed by the National League of Cities in partnership with the American Planning Association. And if you haven't seen this resource yet, it's about a hundred pages long. It was published last year by the NLC and the American Planning Association. I can forward that to you. But it is a wealth of information and examples from small towns to big cities all across the country, giving examples of what policies have been implemented, whether they're working or not, the challenges associated with getting them implemented. So staff has already been looking at these and seeing what we might be able to pull and bring recommendations forward to administration and council in the future. So to create a forum where policy ideas can be discussed with input from a variety of stakeholders, staff have clarified the committee's focus and expanded its membership, with the latter including more stakeholders. So on the dais in front of you is a green folder. It has the proposed revisions to the ordinance, giving it kind of refocusing the purpose and duties, as well as the establishment of, of, of new memberships. And then the second page is just kind of a shorthand before what the current committee structure is and what would be proposed going forward, with the idea being we're bringing more folks to the table so that when policies and initiatives do come forward, they can have a thorough vetting by lots of different stakeholders before they come to council for further review and consideration. If city council would like to reconstitute the committee and/or move forward with any of the proposed modifications outlined in the packet, please let us know, and we'll work with our city attorney to prepare an update to the ordinance for council's consideration. I'd also like to thank Councilor Koewke and everybody who participated in those small group discussions that helped get us to where we are today. The conversations I participated in were thoughtful and engaging, and for that, I am grateful. And I can remember several instances, and I think you might have stepped out, but several of our team members really came out of those meetings energized, with, you know, wanting to use this as kind of a baseline. And for lack of better words, a clearinghouse to look at future policies and initiatives in the community and getting real input in real time from folks that have experience in this field and different sectors as it relates to housing in our local economy. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, we're not looking at Bill. We're looking at Brian.
In terms of, yeah, in terms of attendance, Bill, was it like, was it like leadership mostly that seemed like had attendance waning? Was there just less appointees to the board? Like, what is, what is your diagnosis, I guess, of this, the death of this thing? Or not one single thing?
Well.
I don't mean to pin you down.
I'm trying to figure a way of expressing my feelings on this. You know, certainly, I appreciate the intent. And certainly, I would be an advocate to give to you the necessary structured tool to achieve the kind of activities that we hope something like this would, would elicit. My feeling is that, um, from past experience, and maybe it's just COVID, but the enthusiasms that I've seen from the participants have significantly waned to a point where I, I don't know, I'm not totally convinced that they would provide. they would provide, uh, any kind of meaningful implementations. Now, having that caveat, again, I would provide you with the tool that you need in order to move us forward as a city. I think that that throws an awful lot to you in terms of making this structure, this committee, this group of 13 people feel as though they're engaged and contributing to a point where they're enthusiastic enough to participate. From that point of view, if you put it together and you build it, I would look at it very carefully to see that this is, one, administered properly, which I believe it will be, but also that you can elicit from the community the kind of support and infrastructure that will actually accomplish something.
Did, but I guess like, do you think there was a lack of like clear direction or leadership? Is that mostly why?
I think, I think people started feeling as though there was no great...
Like they weren't doing anything?
Accomplishment.
Yeah.
You know, the, and, and for that reason, uh, why do I attend if I can't contribute?
It's a waste of time.
Yeah.
Um, the, one thing I would say, I, I love like this makeup. One thing I would say is that, um, I feel like just in our experience seating, uh, civilian police review board, that having like all of these requirements spelled out, I think makes it actually harder to seat. Um, I would, I would say. Um, maybe an alternative could be that we set these as goals rather than requirements. And also 13 members is a lot.
Yeah.
But, um...
Where do they sit?
Is there, is there something in here that talks about quorum?
That was going to be my question.
I'd make a, make a quorum...
If it's a low number, then that could increase turnout.
Yeah. Or if it was just like a majority of the body, you know what I mean? Yeah. So that way, if there's three, two of them.
Make a number that you can attain.
Right.
For sure.
Yeah, and that, that would be, that's definitely the challenge. But we also wanted to make sure we had enough people at the table that could provide meaningful input on when, you know?
Yeah, and that's why I think like the, the descriptions are great. I just, so, and I know for, uh, on that board as well, like, I'm, I'm sure some people might fit more than one category at times.
Yes.
And, um, and then we're like, so what do, which one is he supposed to be?
Yes, there could be some consolidation.
Which is probably a little more structured here than it would be like a member of a marginalized group, obviously, but like, yeah.
Then you have to find this person. You have to get them to continue to come.
It's like finding, finding the financial lending sec, you know, it's like, you know, I, I'm sure there's, I, I've met some mortgage lenders that would probably be interested in this, but like...
We have a couple of them currently serving on our land use revitalization committee. Uh, your points are well taken. Uh, I think the attempt here at defining was an idea of making sure that we had proper representation from, from people concerned with this particular, uh, problem or, or subject. Uh, I, again, I, I would challenge the, the community to be participant and then I would challenge administration to provide them with substantive activity.
I feel like with a large group, typically people try not to miss either though because they don't want to miss out on whatever everyone's talking about.
Well, I mean, if, if they're doing important work too.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't see anything about quorum. Is there a section we're missing? Okay.
There is no provision for what section of the ordinance, either the current Article 160 or the, at least the materials I received for this updates. That is something council could specify.
Do we, should we?
If we don't, can any amount qualify?
Yeah, how does it default to, I guess?
Um, I forget offhand. I'll look into that. I think that, I think it is generally understood to be a, a majority of the, uh, the members then in office, not necessarily the, the positions, but the appointed members.
Yes.
Of course, if you, if you specify that it's the member present at the meeting, you could run into a very small group making those decisions that, you know, that could achieve the, uh, the outcome you're looking for with what could be a, a large number of people to gather.
And I think you want to have a quorum in place, especially if this group is charged or asked to vet initiatives before they come to council. I think you'd want to have some consensus or some discussion and having a quorum present for that would be important.
Yeah, let me, uh, since I started this discussion and you actually pointed to a reference, can you see some policies that you think that you would present to this particular group that would be helpful? In other words, do you have things currently queued or in mind as to what you would pursue? I mean, there are numbers of ways to go after this. One is to put a committee in place and try to get them to participate to a point where they bring you things. I, that, I, that, believe me, I think is the weakest approach. The other is to have policies in mind that you want to vet with this group and you want them to participate in terms of making it tangible for this community. The question is, uh, do you have this in place first or do you get those policies out there and then go after it?
I think we do both and we start off by giving this committee some things to look at. And the comprehensive plan and the update that was done 2023 outlined several different proposals that should be evaluated in terms of programs or policies that the city should look at pursuing. So right off the gate, that committee could be looking and evaluating those things with staff's input and, you know, guidance in that, as well as looking at, let's look at some other proposals that would, you know, from a policymaking's perspective would, you know, financially be involved, right? And then that's where you get the other stakeholders at the table to weigh in and say, you know, if the city did take this step forward and do this, is it really going to have any impact on the market? Like, is, is it going to create any opportunities for new housing units to be constructed? Or do we need to look at it another way in terms of, you know, I just heard, um, on the radio and in, on the radio out of Pittsburgh and then in other, um, I don't know if it's in this book or not, in the playbook, but, you know, with a decrease in, um, uh, some housing opportunities, um, especially like student population, with colleges decreasing enrollment really across the board and not, you know, with everything going on with that, there's opportunities there to potentially reallocate some existing housing stock for missing middle housing and refocus the efforts around instead of just for students but for, um, you know, for our local workforce. So, you know, those are things that I hope this committee would get excited about and that we could help guide and then ultimately bring good proposals before administration and council for your consideration.
I, I think the idea of putting that, those, those goals, objectives out is going to help with recruitment in terms of filling these positions and that's something that we frequently and, and with the number of our committees and, and boards, uh, have difficulty with. So that would help. The, the other is that, um, it would be a demonstration of what might be accomplished if we, if we can do these things. I, I believe that this is an approach. I also think that there are other ways to pursue this. But again, uh, I would give you the tool that you think you need in order to accomplish the goals that we all hope to achieve. Simple as that.
Thank you, sir.
Um, this looks great. Um, large number of people, so that's tricky. So keep that quorum low.
For sure.
Um, the, because you just don't, you don't want to get to the point where you aren't being able to have meetings because you don't have enough people to fit all those different slots. Um, so, um, Dee that mentions affordable housing is fabulous. Um, I also would like to see somewhere in there, and maybe it's in there and I'm not catching it, but, um, that missing middle or workforce housing or some, some sort of, um, some sort of mention of that and however you would like to work that in. And then also the, uh, and I think you mentioned it, uh, accessible housing, universal design, however you want to talk about, pardon?
Fair housing.
Well, um, not just fair housing, but accessible housing or universal design where it's housing that someone can use through their entire lifespan because it's, um, if you had a wheel, if you had a wheelchair or you had some other kind of disability through your life, your house would just automatically be, like, almost every single house in Morgantown has a bunch of steps. It'd be really cool to have a few that didn't.
Worked.
Um, hard, hard to do, but, 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 um, it's just, there just aren't, aren't enough. Uh, like patio homes or homes where you can age in place or anyway, any of those accessible or fair or, um, or universal design. I don't, I don't know what the current term is, whatever, whatever is the current term.
Yes, you can absolutely look in that and then...
But I would, I would work those two things in because I think that then when people are, um, coming in, if they are coming in from the angle that they like to see Morgantown more densely developed, or they'd like to see Morgantown have more variety of housing of every, every, um, income level, um, and then this. I, I've heard about patio homes from my neighbors as they try to age in Morgantown and it's just like, you almost know where each one is in town that might be eligible for them to use and that's it.
Absolutely.
People put elevators in really tiny homes. Like in my neighborhood, there are elevators in homes that are like really little because they couldn't find anywhere else to move to and they're like, heck, I need to get to my second floor and they put in like a little elevator in their garage.
So they can...
It's, it's something. People don't think that, um, disability is ever going to apply to them.
Right. And that's why, to your point too, at, at, at large is we also wanted a small and large employer to kind of get a, a feel for the workforce needs, right, from different perspectives, right? Folks who, you know, bring in hundreds of people a year and employ hundreds of people a year and people who are, you know, small local businesses that have their own problems, getting, getting the right people in place because of maybe housing needs or whatnot.
Yeah. They would like workers and they'd like them to live close by.
Right.
And they complain. Right, please. Anyway.
No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky.
Appreciate it.
Just a heads up, Wheeze's phone died.
Oh, okay.
So I told her that and let everybody know.
All right. Now we are to the public portion. Is there anyone, anyone wishing to speak?
Ricky?
Here's your chance.
Drew?
Drew?
Ryan?
You got comments? Come on up.
This is your moment. All right, we're going to open that public portion and then we're going to close that public portion and we're going to move on to items for discussion and ordinance. Item A is an ordinance, uh, mending Article 1751 entitled Housing Code. And Drew Candace?
Good evening, councilors, city managers, Mr. Simonson. Appreciate the opportunity to be back here again. As many of you know, Drew Candace, Chief Building Official for the city. Article 17, 1751, otherwise known as the Housing Code. Um, the updates to this ordinance are basically housekeeping, a little bit of cleanup, clarification and providing clear, clarification and definitions to establish some, I guess, clarification on a few of them. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
This brings us just up to standard. Is that correct?
Excuse me?
This brings us up to state standard?
Uh, this is, this is the local ordinance establishing, establishing the Housing Code for rental inspections. Uh, for example, update to definitions applicant. Um, it clarifies who would be an applicant, therefore it would be an agent or an owner. Uh, and it spells it out here more clearly, I think. Um, also updates the definition of owner to be, um, kind of more inclusive, not only a person having title to the property or being in charge or care of or control of the property, but an executor of a will or administrator of a will, the agent for an owner or anyone that's entitled to control or direct the management or disposition of the property. Uh, so sometimes we encounter a unique situation where there's a property that's being rented that's not necessarily by the owner, but it's an estate and we have to figure out, I've talked with Mr. Simonson, who, who's the right person to contact here. So this, I think, helps us identify that more directly so we can enforce the, the provisions of the code quickly.
Well, thank you for that explanation.
Will this help us with people who are out of state, who, um, who are managing property from there, but maybe they have a local up?
Yeah, I think, I think there's, um, some changes here. There's small changes, but I think that would help us, um, expand on what's already in there. It's already designated that there has to be an, an agent, right? Um, I think if, if we can...
That resides in the state, right?
That resides in the state, yes. Um, and speaking with Mr. Simonson, the reason for that is to have law enforcement anywhere in the state serve summons if necessary. So that's the explanation on the state resident part of that. Um, but we want them to be able to respond in the event of an emergency. We don't want to get called out at two or three o'clock in the morning for a house fire and have occupants, two or three, however many apartments displaced and a building condemned and nobody wants to respond from the property. But we want to, we want to be able to take action quickly, get, get the violations resolved, get those people back in their homes, um, so on and so forth. So the idea is that it will allow us to contact people and actually get something done quicker.
This is like, I think this was an issue at the municipal league where people were buying up property and owning it and not living, living in California.
It's an issue here.
Yeah.
Big issue here.
I just wanted that, I just wanted that clarification. I know we've discussed it before, but...
Didn't this, uh, in your summaries, doesn't this allow us to inspect hotels now as well?
Yes, that's a change to the definition of dwelling in this ordinance.
Yeah. Which we were not, I guess, for some period of time, at least not permitted to, right?
Well, I think there's some inconsistency there and this is one thing that helps to do is, you know, it requires that we inspect all rental units and there certainly are. Um, so in, in correcting the language there and the definition, I think it provides clarification on, on the intent of the whole housing code.
Great.
How will we let, um, the general public know the specifics that are in here so that they're not surprised or they're, um, informed so that they can comply?
I think we can continue to work with our communications department, do some social media outreach, press releases. Um, hopefully anybody that's renting property was already somewhat aware of some requirements that are in place. And I, again, I don't think that the changes here are large.
No.
But we certainly do everything we can to communicate to people.
Great.
And this will be packed before council two more times, if you see, move it forward.
Move to the agenda?
Yes, please.
Move to the agenda.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. An ordinance designating safe surrender sites. Emily Masarelli?
So, uh, this is, this was my, is expansion of the safe surrender site within our current ordinance. It allows for, uh, dropping off an infant under 30 days old at the Norwood Fire Station. That's where we have installed a baby box. Um, this moves some of the articles around, but essentially allows an infant to, if council were to move this to agenda and approve it, to also drop an infant at, um, at the public safety building. So all, this was a change in state code this year through the legislature brought to us by Council Butcher. And, um, that facility is also, um, manned 24/7 and the, uh, police department in particular, who would be there 24/7, feels comfortable that they could, um, be able to have a policy and procedures to be able to follow state code and to be able to accept an infant, um, less than 30 days old and get it to the nearest hospital facility. So this would just, it, it moves it from the... So this would just, it moves it from the fire code into a separate section of city code, both the Norwood Fire Station and the Public Safety Building. So both of those would be facilities within the city of Morgantown that could accept an infant.
And where would it be installed and...
So in the Public Safety Building, it would not be a, it wouldn't be a newborn safety device, it would just be an individual handing it to a person. So this still follows all...
To dispatch?
It would have a policy for the building, it likely would go to the police supervisor, should that be the case, but it still requires the same anonymity. The person does not have to give their name, does not have to give any information should they not want to.
Any other questions? Over to the agenda? Yeah?
Yep.
All right.
Sure.
To the next one. C, an ordinance amending the city charter to move elections to the May primary date. Our attorney, Ryan Simonson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This ordinance proposes an amendment to the city charter to meet the obligations of 2025 Senate Bill 50, which requires municipalities in the state to hold their elections concurrent with either the May primary election or the November general election. What that requires is a move to an even-year election from the odd-year election you currently have, and so in order to do that, it does require some interim change in the council member terms. This change would move your elections as of 2030 to the May primary. It would do that by creating two, three-year terms in the interim at the 2027 and 2029 elections, so generally follows most closely your current terms while also coordinating with that required even-year May primary date. There are other changes to track state law election dates for the May primary in this ordinance, so there's a requirement that a certificate of announcement be filed by the last Saturday in January. The candidate withdrawal deadline is changed back to the state law candidate withdrawal deadline, where it had previously been changed by council by charter amendment last fall. And the, the write-in candidate deadline is changed to track the state law, which is forty-nine days before an election rather than, I think, the ten currently provided by city charter. That's, that's the full summary. If you have questions about that, I'm happy to address those. Also, because this is a charter amendment proposed by ordinance, it will be set for a public hearing with thirty days' notice, and so the ordinance is set up to be finally considered by council after a public hearing on your July fifteenth meeting.
So essentially, Joe and me and Danielle and Weeze would all be, have a regular election in 2027, but it would be for three years, right?
That's right.
And then the council that's coming on now would have their election same time in 2029, but it would also be for three years?
That's right.
Then once, after twenty, after 2032, it's no longer as confusing. It will just be the four years.
I think by 2030, under this...
Twenty thirty.
Yeah, it will be, we'll go back to four-year staggered terms, though it'll just be on an even year.
Okay. Well, yeah, so the 2030 election would be the, okay.
Twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty are going to be wild.
The bottom line...
Pray we all make it.
The bottom line is that we'll have our city clerk putting together two more elections.
Well, so with these, okay. Those would still be city elections at that time?
In twenty twenty.
And then from that point onward, will be administered by the county?
That's right. The, the city clerk would still handle the nominating petitions, but the, the election itself would be administered by the, the county clerk, and the ballot would be on the, the county election.
Just for clarifications.
No? Any other?
And I guess our, to let the public know our election date is changing as of then?
That's right.
It would change then?
Yeah.
But right now it would stay the same?
Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is my understanding. If I'm wrong, tell me.
Okay.
All right.
Move to the agenda?
Yeah.
All right. Ready to go then?
Cooperate with the inevitable.
I guess. At a steamroller, ready to go. An ordinance amending the business licensing and business and occupation tax provisions to comply with updates to state law. Ryan Simonson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is another ordinance as entitled to, to coordinate the city's processes with some legislation passed this year. The House Bill 2451 does a few different things, but the two covered by this ordinance are changes to city business licenses and changes to the city business and occupation tax to create two exemptions. So cities are authorized under West Virginia Code 8-13-4 to have a municipal business license requirement, including things formally licensed by the state. The, the legislation passed this year creates an exception to that licensing requirement for any business that meets three elements. It's either a sole proprietorship or an independent contractor, they do not have a permanent physical location within the city, and they have annual revenue below $2,500. And so that's now an exception. People who meet all of those requirements do not have to get a city business license, but can still operate within the city. And so that's, that's put into our code by this ordinance. Second, there is an exemption to business and occupation tax liability, so business and occupation taxes are gross revenue taxes charged by municipalities on business activity in the city. Any business that has annual gross revenue, annual gross revenue below $2,500 is now not liable to pay that tax. If they have $2,501 of revenue, they do have to pay the tax on that full amount. So this ordinance accomplishes that. The, the West Virginia Municipal League did a really nice job tracking this legislation and providing a model to municipal attorneys to work from to adopt this in short order to try to get it in place before the fiscal year starts, this, when this legislation becomes effective. And so this is, for the most part, modeled on, on their work. Appreciate their assistance with that. And if council has any questions, I'm, I'm happy to entertain those. Some of the details of it are a bit in weeds, but I would ask that you move it to the agenda so that this can hopefully be adopted in June to become effective July first with the start of the next fiscal year.
Any questions? Seems like a housekeeping matter.
Move to the agenda.
All right, move to the agenda? All right. Item E, annulment request, a portion of Anderson Avenue for Dogwood to the end. And Damon Davis?
Yes, this was a petition or request from a resident that lives on the one side of the street. It is an unopened portion of that street. Dead ends. Originally, it went down and joined another street, but that was since then annulled many, many years ago, so this portion is a dead end. We don't have any purpose in opening up that road. It doesn't serve us any, any, any purpose for pedestrian cyclists in the activity since it just leads into private property. The property would be divided between the uphill neighbor, fourteen sixty-two Anderson, and then downhill, fourteen eighty-five Dogwood, if council approves. They have, as part of the application process, they have to reach out to the utility companies and make sure that, one, there is no utilities within that right-of-way, and, two, that the utilities don't have future plans to install utilities in that right-of-way. And they have received letters from all utilities stating that there's nothing there and that there's no future plans for anything there as well. So with that, I recommend approving it, or at least moving it to the next meeting.
So what are we doing? We're changing Anderson to Dogwood or Dogwood?
No, it's just, it's, Anderson goes straight, Dogwood tees into it.
Yeah, I'm looking, that's what I was looking, that's why I was confused.
It's a little nub.
It's a little nub that sticks out.
Yeah, we would annul that.
Yeah, we would annul that one section, so it'd be just a loop of the roadway that it is currently.
This little piece right here.
It's the piece that goes up here.
We would have annulled that part, yeah.
It's like an, it's, it's sort of unopened or...
It's unopened, yeah.
Yeah. It's flat and...
It actually kind of drops off downhill, that's why, that's why it's not...
Okay.
Actually, there's like a forty-foot elevation change from a small...
It is distinctly not flat.
Yeah, it is a steep area.
Sorry.
I mean, there's this portion that's flat, but it drops...
Just a little chunk in it.
Yeah.
Who's houses? Out of curiosity, why was it, why was this pursued?
The house above that the Mr. and Mrs. Jackson, they just recently purchased that house, it's been occupied for a number of years, but it just went on auction and they purchased it. And I think they were having some issues with, with people parking cars in there, and since it's a public right-of-way, the people that were parking are saying, well, they can park that public right-of-way. And I told them, please, you could call the police and the police could, but they wanted to go this route where they can control the property and not have to call the police. And since it is not of use or value to the city really, since there's nothing we can do with it, she wanted to pursue the annulment.
So which house will it go to?
Half of it will go to the upper house and half will go to the lower.
That's what I thought, that's the usual.
And the parking, what was the attraction that required to repark their apartment?
I don't know, I think there's some neighbors would try to park there. People in the neighborhood would park their cars in that, like, around the same...
I have known before, but not now.
I'm just wondering if we're opening up parking people?
In, in, in normal situations, I would probably recommend against annulments if, because with us potentially using them for pedestrian or cycling activities, but this one, it, I, I don't see a purpose for us to use it since it ties in, it just leads into private property. It doesn't have an exit on the other side that we could potentially use. Actually, it does have a, a one-foot strip easement along the lower properties for utility easement, but I don't think we can squeeze people down through that one-foot strip.
So is there a stipulation that can't build on it, if there's a utility easement?
On that, that section, yeah, but that's not in, on this, that's, that ties into the back of this. Lower on, there's a, there's the, the development below. It looked like in the past that they were going to do townhomes above, and that, that's never been developed, so that, I think that utility easement was a remnant of an older day when this area was being developed.
The property above it, right, on the, I guess on the...
Yeah, the fourteen sixty-two Anderson.
That's not in the city?
It's outside city limits, yes.
How does that interact with us?
So the, the, the part that they would be getting, the parcel, this would be split into two parcels, that parcel would still be within the city limits, it just, they would, they would...
Okay, so it will be split into two parcels?
Yes. And they would receive that parcel, that's twenty foot by a hundred and twenty-four feet long.
And that becomes part of their parcel or...
If they, so make that minor boundary adjustment.
Okay, so they would have to, okay.
They would just become owners of this parcel right now.
Yeah.
They could, they could merge it with other parcels if they want, there are other... But yeah.
What's that, Ryan?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's, it actually creates a separate parcel, but by an all-in street, the, the city's easement for a public right-of-way is removed. Generally, the lot lines meet in the center of the street, and so the, the lots are just what they are without the street over the top of them, so all the city does is record the annulment ordinance, and then...
Right.
People examining title will find that, and there's, and by operation of law, the, the street generally is divided between those two parcels, but it, it really depends on what the underlying property is, so we're not creating a separate parcel that is kind of where the street used to be. It's just reverted into private ownership. And so I think there would be, most likely, they would have a, a property that has, yes, that is partially covered by city limits, but that is not uncommon.
Is there any interest in fourteen sixty-two Anderson and annexing themselves within the city?
That's what I'm...
As far as the city's concerned, I mean, it doesn't add any value to...
I don't know about that.
I mean...
This is, this is one of those areas that I've always looked at that is a donut hole, because you can see behind this house, city.
Yeah, because when we did the Oak View annexation subdivision, there is a weird, we took in those one houses, and then this is the other part.
It's like in Oak View and then...
Yeah.
That's one of our donut holes.
That was one of our, that, the residents of that neighborhood petitioned to be annexed into the city.
Yeah.
They did their door-to-door, right in your neighborhood.
And some didn't want to be, and we left them out. At one street, that's not wanting to be.
All right, move to the agenda?
Yep.
All right. Item F, a resolution amending the 2024, 2025 budget revision number seven for the Morgantown General Fund.
So these were added on here, but we can't take any action on them tonight as a resolution, so they will come back up at next council meeting for action. Since we can't take any action on them tonight, I told John to, you know, he didn't need to come, so, but I can give council kind of an update, brief update. Next meeting, I'm sure he'll go into a lot more detail.
Great.
But if council wants to hear a brief update on these, I'm going to be...
Sure.
And we have it, that we can read it, be ready?
Yeah. So the first three are pretty simple. The first one is transferring funds from the police operating general fund budget to their capital budget to cover costs to, to upgrade some of the vehicles, to outfit their vehicles with radios and things like that. So they've already purchased the vehicles, they've already got the outfitting done, and this is just covering the cost of that, moving money from their, their general fund side to their capital side to pay for it, is the first, the first one.
Move that one to the agenda to get more info?
Are we taking any action on these?
Yeah. Are we motioning this to the agenda?
They need to make, take an action on these.
Or is it not necessary?
It's up, it's up to council, you could move these to the agenda.
What's necessary?
Nothing is necessary.
Nothing's necessary.
The city manager can just add those to your next meeting agenda.
Okay.
Like it or not, we're going to see them, is what you're saying.
It's coming. All right. Item G.
So that one, that one is there is no increase in funds, it's just moving money from one to another, and that's what most of these are.
I think they, they all are, and they're all for capital.
Yes. And so the second one is, you know, the first part of the second, the Capital Escrow Fund is that money from the general funding and capital. The second part of that is, as Vincent said earlier, they received a $75,000 donation from Nancy Elizabeth Love Estate in honor of her mother, and so that is just adding this to the capital budget. The third part of that is taking state funds that the airport got for a streetscape project and adding this to the capital budget, or the Capital Escrow Fund within their budget. And then the fourth is taking, adding money to their marketing budget that, that we've received extra interest in some of our other funds, that we're taking that interest and giving it to the airport for their marketing campaign to help promote the new service up there. That's been a big part of what we've been doing up there, is trying to promote them, and so this helps, helps them with that. That was the Capital Escrow Fund, revision number seven. Item F. So item G is, again, that, that theater, us taking that fund, accepting the donation, and, and moving into capital. This, this allows us to accept that into their accounting system and keeping it straight within what's required from the state and... it straight within what's required from the state, and, uh, and then once we accept this into the theater fund, then we can allocate it through the, their, their Capital Espro Fund. And again, that was a generous donation from Nancy Love Estate. The third, the fourth one, the Hazel Ruby Park Fund Revision One is a little more complicated, and John will definitely go into it and explain it a lot better than I can. This is more of an accounting, making, kind of correcting some things that happened in the past. The, uh, Hazel Ruby got a grant for a million, uh, one that was deposited into their checking account, into the Hazel Ruby Park checking account, uh, in when, in twenty twenty-two, and, but then when it was, uh, when funds were used from that, they were never moved over to Capital Espro. And so we paid for them, uh, but we didn't pay for them with the money that we're supposed to. So this is really just moving that money from the checking account to the Capital Espro Fund so we can actually spend it the way we're supposed to be spending it. So it's, it's more of a, uh, accounting to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And again, John, John will explain that a whole lot better, uh, next week.
We're complying with accounting principles of some kind.
Exactly. Exactly, making sure we're spending the money the way we're supposed to be spending it, and accounting for it the way we're supposed to be accounting for it. I guess it was an oversight of that money was not moved from the checking account to the Capital Espro Fund. Again, that was about, I think it was forty thousand dollars that was expended in this, and that's accounts for that as well. Any questions on any of those?
Anybody object, see if it comes up again? No? Bye.
We're pretty, pretty simple, not, uh, increasing any, or, you know, not spending any additional money, it's all money we have everywhere, just allocating it appropriately.
Great. Now we have, um, the possibility of an executive session. Is there somebody who would like to read that?
I move for an executive session, discuss, discussion of matters protected by attorney-client privilege, as anticipated, council may make, may discuss this item in executive session pursuant to West Virginia Code six dash nine A dash four B twelve.
Second.
On favor, yes. This bill, all right, thank you. Oh, we're moving to executive, we don't need to hit that.
I always do.
You can hit it.
All right. I hit it. All right. It was funny.